As Bingelele, we are now on Kumondo Lana Namshane. Jobasi Lana, you see the team, the committee, the Zmduwa Panzi, Nezamandla, but you energy, umnyango. Upayi, no mbono, you go to Kumthetso, opegene, Nezamandla, the dogutwa, I guess. Gube konna is tribiano, esu fagayo. Esu zo quas, you go to umnyango, uquazu, uksebenza gashi. Si Lana ge, si se ndaweni ukpaal. Ngisho, you go to lshambes, ne entlanza, you go ta, as na inomundo zutu ya samukela. Oh apela, si bu yo ketwin. Abada banenga, baga saz, no tba oba ribonome, eh, no bangaya keba be ribon. Eh, si zo konda go, otabi, esu se ngalo. Ngikelukala ngala, ngasuse ngamba nabu. Si nobaba, ukula, eh, sugoma sugoma kula. Si be noba, udomama, umalinga. Angizoshon, quazosan, ngitma, ngikrazutu basugapi, abanyi basu, baca bleka ku. Si nobaba, umashahule, olaitu seguan. Si be noba ulu. Si be no mama, umatogwe. Si be nobaba, umailam. Eh, si be nobaba, ovulmarais. Me nage, u baba uluzipo. Ongusla lo, wa ndele committee, lawa mineral resources and energy. Joba besen, ngshili timba, ilingala, ila amende. Ngala ana, yitimba, lotoli. Umanga be, eh, ufunu kulumia Africans, Ibraad Africans, bazos tolegela ngisngis. Umanga be, u kulumis swate, obangaya azutisakulu si swate. U bazos tolegela ngisngis. Mukulumis zul, bazos tolegela ngisngis. Mukuluma, eh, iswenda. Eh, u kulumis sut, kulu, ah, ya bona, kulumis shangan. Kulu, tetis toss, no ba iipilui meje. Bazogwenzwa, kongo, uksebenzi, you go to, ba tolega, u gwenzwa, lutinjengetimba ilila. Si zue, u go to neti. Ba umanga be, so tsumshabi, mundo simpo, ka kulumi, isngis. So, shesibene, inga, you go to, ayu go tojenkes, iskati singe, zukutu, tsinge, zonogutu bufunu kti. So, sunumunda kullege, olimaso, kulumanga lo, bazos si za bona, baz tolega. Eh, si Lana ge, obaguna lo, mtheto. Ningo lele, ledzo, ngienza, yin oba, umangi pegi. Ngakabanga, you go to, ngayega, gbe, inga, u go to nilis, ulime, kulu ma. Obisngisi, umagukse eli kanje, si ashupa, ngoba, kufane lukala, lukshabanga, ngesu zulugaya, ngesu toss, busu ya si bu isela, esngisi. So, ngiyatembo, you go to, ulimiu, luindesoswa, galaga lula, onge zwanga, uyokuazu, kutashtasen. Nanjoba, bankshilo, you go to, kunomthetoka 2001, eh, go to I guess, act. Si Lana ge, manje, ngoba, gokombo no umnyango, ona, u go to, gubene, yitribiano, esu fagayo. Esu zo gwenzwa, you go to, uquazu, tolega ka, ka lula lo mtheto. Ozokuazu, futi, u go to legelele, uktutuki, sawa limboni, eh, esigiona, eh, ye gas. Izo si za futu, you go to, ikondi, se, ibe nemthetso, esu koda nango. No go to, lababa, giona limboni, bakoko, kanja. Futu zo si zo, you go to, itutuki, zo, you go to, abada bambi sholo. Bazuzha kanja, nibona. Kulé, 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 sector esigioni, kulé mboni esigioni. Ilagalele, futu, you go to, uquazu, you go to, tutuki, so, indau, lastala kon. Izo si za futu, you go to, ngogwenzenda lo, ledzo, si biso, utipikile, zeyen, environment. Senza kanja, no go to, ibe kandinda lo, iyafigeleka. Ipindé futi, ilagalele, ekteni, futi, ilagalele, nemgalasinda. Eh, ku labu, abazu, uquazu, you go to, baca, ni imali sa bu, umnoto, weze lagiti. Izo si za futu, you go to, nigasamandla. Umnyango, u go to, wenzisprinsakus, you go to, lava, abachweba, kule mboni. Benza leyo, de ngenzela, esimtitwin. Nan ngenzela, elekelela, you go to, o, umabenga, zigo, uksebenzitwin, inigasamandla, ne gunya, umnyango. U go to, wenzisprinsakus, you go to, bahamisana, ngenzela, omthetso, oshongayo. Si zo, kela ge, you go to, ngoba, si Lana. Eh, abazu, sho ge, abantu, gokokbona, gwe. U go to, ninani, bona, ninia, stasa, lezi tribiano, lezi, 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 shoyo, Lana. No manina, yonemi, nyimbono, engalekelela, kulezi tribiano, go to, kufane, lezi, zupegi. Si zegge, gunina, ngobuhulmenewenda, doyini, ngohulmenua band. Akfane, lo, umanga be, izimthetso, enzushin, jobanya, kukonukti, zakfaka, yimtitwin, akwenzenga, shulanga, ku band. Goba, sati, pela, si sebenza, ngendando, ya band. Umaga, su, ohulmenua band, kufane, leshambé, si ozwa, imbono ya band, u go to chini. You go to, si zule, imbono yini, nu si zule, u go to, ninani, bona kanja. Si shlangani, si shfumelaani, si pigisaani, goda, ke, grineeni, uzofane, le gbe konishmomo, ke, statua, yuli committee. Si Lana ge, manje, gwenzwa, you go to, nan, si nigas, lelo, tu, bu go to, nibona, yu go to, ninani, bona, ngokti, lezi tribiano. Umawa, utanda, uzosho, shutu ya sfuma, lezi tribiano, lezi shoyo, Lana, umutando, ne lunga, lo go to ka. Asufumi, lo kokshioyo, Lana, upayi, umundu, kesesnigas, anezatu. Si za, kela ge, ngengayi, skati, nan, ngengayi, si mo, si asbonu, you go to, ubila, panji. Si zo, kela ku, you go to, kulezi, si first corner, si upu, pane. Senzo, u go to, maslangana, si shlangana, si kulumi, si ndo, si zoné, tondele, goda, futu, sheshe, si shuka. Goba, sfuna, taposamba, kon, na go to, ey, upu, pane, loa, fika, ngalela, la, kwa, kfigela, ogweskuazu. Asu, you go to, eh, ninga, goda, si same, you go to, ogokala, si fulike, banile, chale, si kulezi, itule, shesu, zon. Si nga, su, si shifté, siye, gwenyindau. Ogwesmeli, amamaski wetu. Ashale, ngijji, ya, zgonagashis, embombe, ne oszto. Impilozetu, piloyako, impilo yami. Senzisprinsak, nobani, zo bona, no manigas, amamai, senzisprinsak, you go to. Si akwazu, you go to, izalja zetu, si ifake, amasanitizer. Ne maiki, bamshoba, zo, nkombeza, anizu, uquazu, you go to, mundo, me kulumi, umli, ndume, sekretile, azokuazu, you go to, basanitize maski, ozonge, nemfawakamlandel. Ogokri, na, bilin, si stralesinazo. Umas, nigas, you go to, kona, la, gurinfunu, gosho, lezi tul, lezi, sbela, zapiximlezi, piso. Ala, jengela, ngalenzel. Si zo, tige, lo, ukpaala, shale, kulezi, asparameze, olande laya, shale, egweslande laye, no mone, uzobefige, grineeni. Umawfiga, lapikgrineeni, ka, si nga, zuten. So, shuti, so tattoo, ey, do, ukpaal. Lo, ey, do, shalala. Lo, zo, beses tulin, zo ukpaala, ngeno, zo ukpaal, u kulumi, OSB, Lande Layena, uzogwenzwa, kanja, lo, kesi, zesfige, grineeni. Si akela, barid, si nga, wey, at least, imshan. Goba, si shimbono yitu. Jobasi Lana, ge, ngenge, ngiteke, umu, balimsu, zemshan, umani, u ten, ne balimsu, zue, eh, eh, u five. Ushu, you go to, u fifty five minutes, muzu, zue, u fifty five. Ushuti, shigbe, lihor. Ushuti, sbaningi, tinan, jobasi kona, la. Umas, nga, tata, ngapiso, go, five minutes. Ushu, you go to, so, tata, mahorama, tatu, nama, naba, aufo, go, five minutes, goba, goba, kona, ne ma movement, so, jobasprubet. Si zo, kela, goba, baba, fak, pa, paramis, zanza.
Temperatures, eh, if you want to speak in any of the official languages of this country. They, and furthermore. We would like you to, eh, we are going to give each and everyone who would like to make their input, five minutes. Eh, to make that input, eh, because eh, we need to observe time. The other important issue has to do eh, with eh, our behavior. Eh, in terms of how important each other to give each other an opportunity to make our points. And to make our views known. So, we expect eh, that from all of you. Also, we, as we know, that we live eh, in the times of COVID. It is important to observe all the protocols or the rules that eh, are supposed to protect us eh, against COVID. Eh, in terms of our masks, eh, using. And then, when you get an opportunity to speak. Eh, the mic would have been eh, sanitized eh, after the last speaker. And we also encourage that you sanitize your hands. And generally, all the protocols of COVID nineteen that we are aware of. Lastly, eh, there are ten seats here in front. Eh, you are going to raise your hand, point, you need to observe.
Okay, question.
Don't we have a third hand?
Don't cool, data, eh, eh, mic.
Come forward.
Sanbona. Eh, eh, elias, ngomane. Eh, umpumalanga province.
From Pumalanga province.
But, beganga, panzi, wa government, abiele, pegu, uzekto, konakutu, kulege, matuwe, msabende, because, msabende, go, te, ngalesa, zazatu.
I feel that we need to take the SOEs back to government so that employment opportunities can be created.
Because, ngobona, kwame, besinga, eh, koresi, you go to, ngachacha, tongele, tindu, na, osesi, ashupega, msabende, go, te, bandwa, na, be, to, bayema, koli, bayema, university, tibabu, ile, bachele, ne ma diplomas.
I feel that at this point, we are struggling as a country, there's no employment opportunity, children, despite being graduates, despite being graduates. The challenges facing the SOEs.
N'gololo, ngutela.
That is my request.
Thanks.
Niabon. You can go back to your chair, my elder.
Eh, ngia, Bingelela.
Greetings.
Gobobonge, ngogo, xonpega, nango, uyikunja, zabu.
To all the dignitaries.
Eh, ngina, mapointe, ambalo, matatu, ngifunukulumela, pegao.
I'd like to bring up three points that I would like to elaborate on.
But before I start with, those are critical, because we, as the members of the community, we might sit here, maybe your document still confuses us. Those are, I think that one is more important, please clarify, and who are those interested groups that raised those issues? I'm saying this intentionally, because I understand, in South Africa, there are some amendments that are made. That, when you look into them, they seek to disenfranchise, or they seek to disadvantage certain groups. But you only see that once you understand who is requesting these changes, why is it requested? Let me get back to my point.
Excuse me, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Kela, you go to, ngikakrisela, ngapambu, you go to, ngitube, ingetule, ingulumoya. Gunema, puzo, lebe, ngathanza, you go to, sivega, bandi, ngao, igakuligatla, hole, lekteni, gube, na lo, go tribiello, awalo, mthetso, si vivi, nyokliskaba, liskuson, goba, sina, gilega, nyindi, umaimitetso, yakiwaya, lelive, ibona, gala, itrinzete, la, ka kulu, labu, le, ngibola, basuele, besinga, thanza, guva, eh, uzuwe, thule, uzigu, yengan, uzigu, be, na lo, guxin, joy, awalo, mthetso, si vivi.
Niabon.
Uh, we know, eh, South Africa, I don't know, we've got low income areas. We also know in South Africa that electricity to utilize either for cooking and all these other things.
Si ati, you go to, kulelive, lasenengze, Mafrika, gunedi, nzaola, po bandu, bakona, bahola, imali, lingapansi, wale, linzale, giles, yesimo, senxala. Kanzla, po bandu, bayema, potalele, uzbasebendise, emandla, la farikazi, ihas.
Eh, then, this worries us, the price of gas is very high.
Lo, gwaskatsata, ka kulu, goba, inzengwa, ya, ya, ihas, isetulu, ka kulu.
Yes, and then, can you make sure, can you make sure that the review of gas price increases are also reviewed in South Africa? So that it allows for those that are disadvantaged, at least to use it as their, as their form of second power. Because we know electricity is not even in all of the areas in South Africa, as we speak.
Besinga, thanza, indasparamezo, you go to, gubenentlela, yuglau, la, inzengwa, yalehasi, ngoba, nyindi, lebandu, labanga.
Ngaba, si kungo, semfundo, ngaba, si kungo, soksebenzela, esesbenzisa, igas. Enforcement, part element, it's been lacking for quite some time. From generation of, of gas, okay, they, we don't generate, but from transportation, where you procure transportation and storages. Can we make sure, because if this one is not corrected, we will continue facing issues of non-compliance when it comes to the storage of gas in South Africa. Which nobody seems to be taking care of it, and it forms part of a bigger problem also. In the rural areas, we don't want to witness cases where the gas, there will be incidences because of the way it is stored, the way. Education around that, it needs to be intensified, make sure that communities, they are aware, if they are utilizing gas, because they are going to use gas now, since electricity is having its challenges. Thank you from my point, those are the points that I wanted to put.
Gunedi, kungo, leti, kon, emparatzen, le farikazi, le farikazi, ti kolo, le tsabendisa, yonalehasi, besinga, thanza, you go to, gubenemthetso, ubuwe, ngentlela, ya kon, na, you go to, le mthetso, utrinsegisa, you go to, bandu, labasebendisa, ihasi, abeko, ingu, pe, ningetinlela, le daluga, shugen. So, begungla, oma, puzla, beginta, ngayabon, ka kulu.
Nan, oh. No, oh, asbonge, uh. Goba, we la, baba, si be, kimbono, yabo. Eh, thank you very much for your contributions. Angpendulelo, gobokonye, mbon.
Thank you very much for the, eh, the inputs that were made by the two gentlemen. Eh, I would like to respond eh, to those inputs, starting with the first.
Um, ka, aisuswa, nganga, ma interest groups.
No.
Isusu, umnyango.
No.
No, ba, lelpuzul, bega, you look green, you know, na, lele, link.
No, it is not true that eh, interest groups eh, are responsible for bringing these amendments to the act. It is the department itself brought these amendments after identifying loopholes.
Ogokala, lo mthetso, la, kule, ndo, kule, puzo, shoyo, lambele, loophole. Is that, inigas, yikonya, iskakulu, goba, dabana, malices. Na, lapuk supply, awakoni, gas, yama, license, you go to, baychu, zane, ugo to, ngoba, nganga, ena, kulezi, indau, uma premises, abasupply, awon.
Eh, firstly, it gives eh, eh, the opportunity. To those people who eh, in this industry, the gas industry eh, have to obtain licenses eh, in order to operate in that sector. Eh, to see, to eat, that who are these people who participate eh, in this industry or in this sector.
Now, si azu, you go to, regulator, lababa, begala, you go to, limboni, sebenza, kanja, Nerza. Eh, ngokomthetso, amkonyazi, sa, you go to, angabashahulis, angokis, awkanya, mka, negama penalties, goba, du, abange, hambesanin, ngenzela, lo mthetso, shongayo.
We are aware that the regulator, Nerza, has the authority. Has the authority to penalize eh, those people eh, who do not eh, follow, who do not comply with the law in this industry. Eh, by charging them fines eh, when they, they, they would comply.
Inkenga, ge, la, yiti, yiz, ilni, ilni, gas, Nerza, iku, nyamanga, ba bandu, umanga be, no mbono, ne license, enga, hambesan them. Oh, in as much as uzama, you go to, uhambesane, no go ta, bandu, pa penalize, oh, god, uyaz, na, you go to, yes, iskati, yashi, ona, senkantolo, go to, umanga, bu nen, wenzeyikali, lingaga. Umilinga, nselo, unga, onga, trina, you go to, is sentence, ya, gbe, yon, no kanyu, go to, ifai, no kanyi, la, na, ayiko, la, itaswa, kon, you go to, oma, unrong, inka, zelwe, wrong, ledzo, batu, iteta. Islaulu, kanyitlaulu, ya, ke, yi, nu penalize, kanja, no mboni, gepa, lo mthetso, wale, zelwi, ona, gusholo, awusholo.
The problem eh, is that even though Nerza has the authority, eh, the legal authority eh, to impose penalties on those people who, who are not compliant. Is that there is no specific penalty eh, that stipulated eh, they not comply, if you are in breach. Eh, this is how mu, how much you are supposed to be penalized. Now, eh, even in court, eh, we know that eh, when you are facing eh, charges or an offense. It, 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 it does stipulate eh, in law, that if you have eh, you are guilty of such an offense. Eh, this is the penalty that you have to pay. But with eh, the act as it is now, there is no such eh, specification, that if somebody eh, has breached the law eh, or has broken the law eh, in the. To those who have licenses to operate in the industry, it does not stipulate the amount or the type of penalty that is supposed to be imposed by Nerza.
Joba, ge, besen, kasi, lekala, ngite, manje, lo, lezi tribiano, zezama, ugnigas, amandla. Ne gunya, ku la, ku leabo, aban, yile, de si biso, petileza, kabanga, ma regulators, umnyango, kobola.
A picture, eh, someone eh, who has a license to operate in this industry, if they have breached or if, if they have not complied with the act. They, they might be penalized eh, an amount of two million rent per day for non-compliance. Eh, secondly, eh, another penalty might be that your license might be revoked or be taken away from you if you have not complied with the law.
Ogonye, eti, isosé, isosso, isosé, you go to. Yenzisprinsak, you go to, lababe, mboni, benzisin, no uksebenzitwin. Ness, 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 bo, peselo, abazazi, abazfage, gozoni. Leo, go, uzosiza, ledzo, bu itas, zutu, fundele, ngabon. Ishoga, nyela, ledzo, bu, yesho, eti, uzosiza, lo, go, figela. Ledzo, si biso, petilezi, go to, yi, yeh, health and safety. Ukuseleka, no figeleka, goba, si beans, umparat, jobubu sushi, futi, nindau, environment. Isinyezgi, ngizamukoka, pesu, isinyezale, zezindo, isshoyo, lo mthetso, funu, you go to, si lungi, sekon, na, sefage, lezi, tribiano, ugwenzwa, you go to, ledzo, si biso, zokimboni, ka gas. Ba figeleka, umparat, jobubushonzi, ufigeleka, nindau, gogunzalo, iguazu, you go to, isige.
Some of the provisions that are contained eh, in this amendment bill eh, bring about eh, improvement or in the enforcement of the law. Eh, so that people eh, are made to comply with the act. Eh, another important aspect that has been brought in by the amendments is that it also eh, provides for the safety eh, of employees. Eh, those people who are employed eh, that those safety measures are enforced eh, in terms of the law. Eh, it also eh, provides eh, for the protection of communities in which eh, these industries or this industry operates. And then, lastly, it also provides for the protection of the environment. Eh, to avoid the degradation of the environment in which eh, the industry operates.
Eksshoyolago, wasimtitwin, you go to, isosiza, ugnigas, iku, nyana, amandla, kumongoshi, opegeleni, na lo, umnyango. Which is, es, es, mduwa panzi, Nezamandla. U go to, enze, ledzo, go to, yik, eh, enze, ledzo, go to, yik, gas master plan. Loyo, gas master plan, isosiza, you go to, ipegelé, you go to, ihangi, shakanja, ni, igas, indaweni, itize. Engasabende, uko zon, eh. In respect of gas supply. But also very quickly, it is gonna look at the demand and transportation of gas as well as estimated cost scenarios as far as the gas is concerned. Or operating gas service or a manager, a gas facility.